Good evening. David Boucher, Senior Designer at National Grid, 1101 Turnpike Street, North Hanover. I'm here on behalf of National Grid to ask the City of Newburyport to place two four-inch connoits at pole 21 approximately 10 feet into the private property in order to provide new electric service to what's being built there. If the city sees fit and enables us, we'll have the rights to have those lines there. Thank you.
Any questions? Paul Scollier?
Yes, Mr. Boucher, can you just describe to me what this is going to look like on public property? If you recall, we had an issue about a year or so ago with large things in the planting strips.
I'm not familiar with what you're referring to, but it is an underground feed into the -- it's going to go under the sidewalk approximately 30 inches. So you're not going to see anything.
Okay, great, thank you.
You'll just see pipes going up the pole.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions? Anyone else wish to speak in favor? Thank you. Anyone wish to speak against? Anyone wish to speak against? Any questions by the council? Any further questions? Paul Subolos.
You're going under the sidewalk, just planning cleanly underneath the sidewalk. The sidewalk was just redone and the street was just redone. Timing is everything.
Right. They're there already. The risers, we call them risers, the pipes going up there, are in place.
Oh, okay. Timing is everything.
Yeah. The contractor, whoever built it, for the owners of the property must have got --
Thought ahead.
Thought ahead and people, yeah. Now we don't have to upheaval, any kind of upheaval now, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. President. Paul Sager?
I see that we're giving you permission to lay and operate the conduit, but there doesn't seem to be any property right. There's no easement given here. What's the nature of the property right? Is the license franchise? Is it rightful by our vote?
We go about getting easements from commercial or residential properties on our own.
But this is in our property.
Right. And that's what I'm asking for tonight.
I know, but you're asking for ease.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a petition for easement, if you want to call it that, yeah.
Further questions? What is the way to the council?
Move to approve.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Question carries. Hearing is closed. Take a short break and then have the city council meeting.
We have an operation at Marchess Hill and mostly pines. Instead of being from Sunday morning, it's periods of time in the morning, it's going to be just from dawn to dusk. No, no changes mentioned there. The other one is giving the ACO some enforcement powers when you've got a really dangerous thing.
I like that show that I've never seen.
It's aggressive, yes, we do. Is it aggressive behavior or biting or fighting?
Jersey should be actually divided.
It was originally kind of nonsense because we said, "We've got to have a standard bill." Make it the ACO's judgment because he's trained or she's trained.
I'm south, just ashore. There's no near total.
There was another provision in there that said that anybody observing it has to report the dog.
How about you? That's the campaign trail.
A rambunctious playful dog, last one or another dog, not interpreting it as to, yeah, so. It's been committed.
Do you feel like getting focused outside if you report me?
Not that I've heard, but I haven't talked to Bob. Bob did come to the meeting and it was interesting, they --
Jim didn't hear a lot, you're going to be with there.
-- in the situation between Marchess Hill and --
Let me have to do a sound check.
-- there have been a grand total of --
I'll do it, I'll do it, I'll do it.
Almost all of them for unlicensed dogs.
Oh, yeah?
The Hart Commission didn't seem to have an objection either. He walks up there, I haven't seen it, I've watched my doctor.
Three years.
It's not successful, then I work wrong.
That's funny.
Should be good, but yeah, we just met a lot of great people.
Good. It's fun when you meet cool people and you're like, "All right, confirm why you're doing what you're doing."
I'll do it tomorrow. I'll do it.
Oh, she mentioned?
No.
You get a lesson on these things, good girl.
I have a fundraiser tomorrow for --
To open it up and hit on or something? That's what he told me.
You should go there, it's fun.
What's up here?
Do you ever go on the ninth wave? You should, it's that catamaran, that bring your grandson on, that they've got a nice net you can lay on, it's really cool.
I almost did not. I'm sure. I was thinking about having back tomorrow, going back to lake.
Want to go out there, almost somebody had a big boat and they knew what they were doing.
We didn't even get up to the mouth, we just tease there. Then you turn right and there's the granite school.
You know, they're redoing their whole riverfront and they want to be able, it to be a destination back and forth, which I think would be awesome. Stop, stop, doc, have a beer, come back.
Good for you. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Connor is not going to be able to come on the 28th and he doesn't know what your procedures are for approving a license to sell little bags on the street or any kind of a license to sell something on the street. He won't be here because he's going to be up here doing his job.
He doesn't have to appear if you have to speak on his behalf, that's not a problem.
Somebody has to speak on his behalf?
Nobody has to speak on his behalf, but it's a good idea, someone should.
Well, I'm not sure, I can't, I'll be running the road race, how about you? Would you be ready to run? Oh, yeah, actually, it's Monday night.
Nope.
I don't know if I can speak on his behalf.
Anyone could, but even if he doesn't appear.
Tonight, we're going to give everybody a bath. Is this a good idea? What, this? Better be quick, huh?
Yeah.
Looks like robbery. Well, I'm just not used to it, so I'm like. I did it for five months at one point, between John Mulcahy and Richard.
Let's see, good.
Sound check on number seven. Governor O'Brien, City Council President. Eddie?
Counselor Cameron, number five.
Counselor Kinsey, number four.
Counselor Tanta, number two.
Counselor Cronin, number one.
Counselor Igram, number 12.
Counselor Vogel, number 11.
Counselor Connell, number 10.
Counselor Hartquist, number nine.
Counselor Herzog, number eight.
Assistant Clark, number six.
We've been doing that our whole lives. Number nine? I want to be number nine.
Please rise. Can I just have a moment of silence? Donald Cooten passed away, he's the father of Kim Cooten and the father-in-law of Joe Texel, who've done a lot for the City of Newport on various committees, so we'll have a moment of silence for Donald Cooten. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Assistant City Clerk called to order due to roll call for the City Council meeting July 14, 2014.
Counselor Cronin.
President.
Counselor Igram.
Here.
Counselor Junta. Counselor Hartquist.
Present.
Counselor Herzog.
Here.
Counselor Kinsey.
Here.
Counselor Tanta.
Present.
Counselor Vogel.
Here.
Counselor Cameron.
Present.
Counselor Connell.
Present.
And Counselor O'Brien.
Here.
President.
I think. Late file items.
On your desk you'll find there's several late file items. Communication number six. There's two orders, order two, three, and order four, please disregard communicate committee item. There's license and permit committee item. There's also neighborhoods and city services, two committee items.
What is the wish of the council?
Motion to waive the rules and accept these late file items.
Second. In discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Put in the white spot during the council meeting. Late file items, public comment. I think we have three. Eli Balin, 55 Prospect Street. Mr. Left, Jeff Brunel.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Jeff Brunel, I'm the Lieutenant of the Salvation Army here in Newport. I live at 40 Water Street here in town. I'm here to speak briefly about the parking restriction warnings that's been proposed by Counselor Igram. Contrary to what you read in today's Newport Daily News on the front page, there is another church that wasn't mentioned, although your article was great. Salvation Army has been here in town since 1885 and we are a Christian Protestant church and our mission is that as a member of the evangelical Christian church, the Salvation Army's mission is to preach the gospel of Jesus and to meet human needs in His name without discrimination. And so now, in 2014, meeting human need manifests itself by way of our food pantry, our soup kitchen programs, our after-school programs, various activities for seniors. We run a summer camp in Sharon, Massachusetts where we send 20 to 30 kids every summer and all different other, you know, anti-poverty homelessness prevention programs, like I said, with a faith-based motivation, but never any kind of strings attached. Anyway, the Salvation Army has been located on 40 Water Street, which also occupies the corner lot of Two Fair Street since 1971. Prior to that, from 1885 to 1970, we occupied half of the grog on Middle Street where that is now. And there used to be a bookstore and now there's like a gem shop and they sell other sort of trinkets in that location. But that was our location for several years. Back in February, I think it was, the City Council approved a measure to allow for two-hour parking for non-Fair Street residents and unlimited parking for Fair Street residents on Fair Street from Water Street to Liberty Street on both sides. That just, although it was approved, I think back in February, was just recently enacted as the new, you know, the nice weather has come in. And so we were greeted about maybe three weeks ago to two-hour parking only signs all the way up and down our section of Fair Street. I think this is an excellent idea, especially for the residents of Fair Street because they do have difficulty parking. In fact, many of them park in our lot. Two weeks ago at one of the city council meetings, there was a gentleman who mentioned that we did not have signs in our lot. We do in fact have signs in our lot that say parking for Salvation Army business only. We generally don't enforce those because we try to be good neighbors to people and we don't want to go around towing people who likely support us financially and otherwise. But in the meantime, residents of Fair Street are currently able to park in front of the Salvation Army's building, but my own volunteers can't. We're not so worried about our clientele because generally they're in and out within the two-hour timeframe. But our operation runs solely on the donations and volunteerism in this community and so we have at any given time, three to four people volunteering at our emergency food pantry. They generally work for about six-hour timeframe and then on Wednesdays and Thursdays, we operate our feeding programs and that program operates with anywhere from three to 12 volunteers, depending upon whether it be the lunch program or the dinner program. Our parking lot fits approximately eight cars. The council on aging employees have four that alone that they fill up. Add to that my own Salvation Army vehicles and it leaves about one to two spots in our lot for volunteers that are going to be there for a longer than two-hour period to park. Add to that the complication of folks that are still parking in our parking lot even though they have resident-only parking on Fair Street and it just, it just makes things difficult. And, you know, Council on Agenda has proposed, I think, a great compromise that would benefit both the residents of the area as well as the people that volunteer and support the Salvation Army. And, well, you know, we know that the council on aging issue is sort of a short-lived issue at this point where they do have sort of an end plan in sight, however, they've been a tenant of the Salvation Army for about 29 years now and there's still at least a year left to go with that plan. So we would hope that the Salvation Army would be recognized by way of approval of Council on Agenda's proposal to make parking on Fair Street from the intersection of Water Street to the property line at Two Fair Street, which is essentially our driveway to our parking lot on the west side of the street, which is basically essentially in front of the Salvation Army building on Fair Street, parking for Salvation Army business only Monday through Friday, 8 to 6, which is what's been proposed, excluding holidays, of course. I think a lot of good discussion and thought went into that compromise and I think it works best for everybody. Briefly, if I could take just another second, it was a proposal in there at one point in various variations of it. One of them was to give us placards to be able to give to our volunteers. And I just, I want to say to you, while that sounds like a great idea, managing that is just something that we don't have the resources to do. Someone leaves with the placard, we have to call the city council and say, "Can you issue a new one?" Or however that process works, I don't even know. So we would ask, like I said, the proposal as written by Counselor Igram be taken out of Public Safety Committee today and voted and approved if it pleased the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Connor McManamy?
My name is Connor McManamy. I live at 210 High Street. My topic is reusable bags. I have some bags created that feature a combination of three designs that came out of a competition at the high school this spring. I made these bags as a summer project and to encourage people to use less paper and less plastic bags. Our goal is to provide a cheap reusable bag and make it available to everyone in Newport. I'm asking for permission and I have a formal request of City Council, which did not make it on the agenda for this meeting, but I would like permission to sell as soon as possible to sell the bags in downtown Newport in Market Square. All of the profits that we make for selling the bags at $2 each will be donated to the Sierra Club. The bags are already available at Joppa Fine Foods, Chameleon Partridge in a Bear Tree, the Warren Street Market and Deli, Vintage Chic, Mara, and at my email, betterbagsfornbpt@gmail.com. Ann Ormond at the Chamber of Commerce has also agrees, agreed to publicize the bags to her members. We've also asked for permission to sell them outside Market Basket on a few days and we are still looking for more places to sell the bags. My being here is simply to let you know about this project, to show the bags, and since I will not be able to make it to the next meeting, I'm asking for your consideration on my request to sell the bags downtown in Market Square this summer. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know a place to get selling.
The Vinow Mayor's comment tonight, we'll move on to consent agenda.
The consent agenda includes the approval of the minutes for June 30, 2014, in for approval. Transfer Mayor's General Fund, $7,890 to school expenses, $7,890, in for approval. There's four communications. Communication number one is a block party at Highland Ave between Lafayette and Anne and Jakes, July 28, 2014, in for approval. Block party at Congress Street from Buck to Dove, August 2, 2014, in for approval. A block party at 54th Street, August 9, 2014, in for approval. Whittier Regional Voc Tech High School, 2014-15 budget assessment is in for Budget and Finance. There's one appointment first reading, John Ronan, 21 Ferry Road. Reappointment for Constable for Civil Business expires May 31, 2019. That's the end of the consent agenda.
What is the wish of the council? Counselor Herzog?
I'd like to remove transfer number one.
Any else?
Point of information to the Assistant Clerk. So John Ronan's up for Constable for Civil Business, but in our packet it says Council on Aging. Is that the same thing? Or is it?
No.
Okay.
Any else? What is the wish of the council?
We also remove communication four.
What's that? Whittier? Whittier. Anything else?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll move on to the regular agenda. Transfer number one.
Transfer from Mayor's Office, General Fund Recast, $7,890. Transfer to School Expenses, $7,890.
I'll move to approve.
Second. Discussion. Counselor Herzog?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no, I have no objection to the nature of this transfer. My only question is, in recent weeks, in recent months, the City Council has been asked to approve the funding of various feasibility studies as they relate to parks and field in the city. And so I'm curious, since this is money coming out of the city's free cash account, whether a feasibility study has been undertaken by anyone who might be aware. I mean, I'm sure one has, I'm just, it's just curious to me that the City Council's line of knowledge has not received such a study.
I can help clarify that, Counsel.
Okay, thank you.
This is for the high school baseball field, not the Mullen Field. This is for the high school baseball field, the only baseball field in the City of Newport since we took two away. And the alumni, they got a quote from someone to redo the whole infield and pitcher's mound and batter's box and everything for $18,000. The alumni under their own have raised $11,000, so they need $7,800 to do this. This has nothing to do with the study that we're doing for Mullen or the Fuller Field. This is completely separate where, you know, the alumni went out and tried to get more money, they couldn't. They came to myself and the mayor last week and asked for this, you know, and I said I would sponsor this, you know, it's the only baseball field we got, the company's available and they just need the money to fund it, so.
Thank you. That's all I'm asking for, just more information. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Communications. Yeah, communications. We have appointments. We can go appointments you want, go ahead.
Yes. Appointment second reading. Appointment's the second reading, Richard Traister, MD 325 Merrimack Street, the Disabilities Commission, expiration is June 30, 2017. Reappointment, Brian Brunel, 83 Guiden Street, West Newbury, Constable for Civil Business, July 1, 2017. Daniel Scott, 4 Ferry Road, Methuen, Harbor Master and Special Police Officer, April 15, 2017.
Motion to approve. Second. Approved collectively?
Collectively.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, we have a roll call for this, I'm sorry. City Clerk Jones will be reprimanding when I come back, so I better go.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Igram.
Yes.
Counselor Hartquist.
Yes.
Counselor Herzog.
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
And Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Move on to communications. Communication number four, Whittier Regional Voc Tech High School. Motion to approve. Second. Discussion. Paul Scollier?
Just that this is something set in stone that we're required to pay Whittier and it's already budgeted. Maybe the people at home would like to know it's $336,873 that we're obligated to pay Whittier.
We'll be paying 25 percent, $84,218 by August 15. The rest will be at other dates throughout the year. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Communication number six.
Communication number six is a request from the Mackle Exception School, Newport. I'm asked, I am writing to ask for the City Council approval of our plans for the Second Annual Pumpkin Patch Fund Run scheduled for Sunday, October 19, at Cashman Park, Newport, from 10:00 a.m. till noon. The fund run is a 1K costume run for the Newport Railtail for local area children. It was a huge success last, last year and the proceeds of the event go to the sponsor for the youth empowerment services at the Greenie Geiger Crisis Center.
Motion to approve the public safety. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Move on to orders. Order number one.
Order number one is ordered that the City Council of the City of Newport approves the following license contract application for the 2014 construction year. Wave Guard Incorporated, 10 North Southwood Drive, Nashville, New Hampshire. Paperwork on file in the clerk's office. Submitted Counselor Ari Herzog.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Orders approved. Order number two.
Order number two, that the City Council of the City of Newport accepts with gratitude the gift in the amount of $1,000 from the Bethany Masonic Lodge, 724 Main Street, Hampstead, New Hampshire, from their fundraising efforts associated with the 2013 Red Sox World Series Trophy Tour. Said proceeds are to be applied to the Knoc Mullen Baseball Diamond Project. Submitted Counselor Charles F. Tanta.
Motion to approve. Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Move into, on the late file, order three.
Order three. Ordered now here, therefore it is resolved and ordered that the loan order duly adopted by the City Council on August 13, 2012, appropriating $38,818,204 for the purpose of paying cost of designing, constructing, furnishing, and commissioning a new Brezner Hand Model School, the Brezner Hand Project, be hereby amended to allow for the borrowing and expenditure of funds not otherwise needed for the Brezner Hand Project, for the construction of a new baseball field behind the Knoc Mullen Upper Elementary School, and for the rehabilitation of the Fuller Field athletic facilities. Sponsored Counselors Larry G. Junta and Counselor Thomas F. O'Brien.
Motion to approve. Second. The further committee, I think would be more appropriate, for it to, oh. Correct. I'm sorry. Withdraw the. Motion to refer to Budget and Finance. Second. Was it Budget and Finance or was the other one referred to? I've got to redo this. What's on the floor? Do you see it, guy?
Budget and Finance.
I think we should go to General Government. General Government, so we can discuss that. That's where the original ones were and tonight we'll be taking those out and receiving file. These are new ones being replaced because we've had new language from the attorneys and also we have a dollar figure. So refer this to General Government if you would, please. I would please. Withdraw that previous motion. And as moved, move to General Government.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Late file, order number four.
Order number four, resolution and order pursuant to the provisions of General Law's Chapter 59, Section 21(c), this 14th day of July, 2014, that the City of Newport pursuant to General's Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), shall seek voter approval at the next special election on Tuesday, December 9, 2014, to assess taxes in excess of the amount allowed pursuant to General Law's Chapter 59, Section 21(c), for the payment of principal and interest on bonds, notes, or certificates or indebtedness issued by the City of Newport to pay cost of constructing a new baseball field behind the Knoc Mullen Upper Elementary School and rehabilitating the athletic facilities at Fuller Field, including the payments of all costs incidentals are related thereto. Two, to the end of the city clerk is hereby directed to place the following question on the ballot. Shall the City of Newport be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and one-half so-called the amounts required to pay for the principal of an, of an interest on the $1,700,000 bonds issued in order to pay cost of constructing a new baseball field behind the Knoc Mullen Upper Elementary School and rehabilitating the athletic facilities at Fuller Field, including the payment of all costs incidentals. So refer this to General Government, if you would, please.
Withdraw that previous motion.
And as moved, move to General Government.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Thank you very much. Late file order number four.
Order number four, resolution and order pursuant to the provisions of General Law's Chapter 59, Section 21(c), this 14th day of July, 2014, that the City of Newburyport, pursuant to General's Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), shall seek voter approval at the next special election on Tuesday, December 9th, 2014, to assess taxes in excess of the amount allowed pursuant to General Law's Chapter 59, Section 21(c) for the payment of principal and interest on bonds, notes, or certificates or indebtedness issued by the City of Newburyport to pay cost of constructing a new baseball field behind the Knott-Mullen Upper Elementary School and rehabilitating the athletic facilities at Fuller Field, including the payments of all costs incidentals are related thereto. Two, to the end of the city clerk is hereby directed to place the following question on the ballot. Shall the City of Newburyport be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the principal of an interest on the $1,700,000 bonds issued in order to pay cost of constructing a new baseball field behind the Knott-Mullen Upper Elementary School and rehabilitating the athletic facilities at Fuller Field, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. Submitted Counselor Larry J. Chunta and Counselor Thomas F. O'Brien.
Motion to refer to General Government.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Thank you very much. Move on to ordinance. Ordinance number one, second reading.
Second reading ordinance, Chapter 13, Section 179, handicap parking. No person without a duly authorized handicap vehicle registration or placard, as described in Mass. Underlaw's Chapter 90, Section 2, shall park in the following described parking spaces as designated by signs and symbols. Add waterfront trust lot, first space on the northwest side of the waterfront trust parking lot upon entry from Merrimack Street. Submitted Counselor Robert J. Cronin.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Augman?
Yes.
Counselor Hartquist?
Yes.
Counselor Herzog?
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Second reading ordinance number two.
Chapter 13, Section 179, handicap parking. No person without a duly authorized handicap vehicle registration or placard, as described in Mass. Underlaw's Chapter 90, Section 2, shall park in the following described parking spaces as designated by signs and symbols. Add Lime Street, one space at 70 Lime Street until June 30th, 2016. Submitted Counselor Jared J. Augman.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Augman?
Yes.
Counselor Hartquist?
Yes.
Counselor Herzog?
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Move to Committee Items. Budget and Finance.
Move to remove item six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Go ahead.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Anything else?
Move to remove item seven.
Could you read it, please?
Okay. This transfer, general fund free cash, $29,525. Transfer to road work and paving, $29,525.
Discussion?
Did we move to approve?
I haven't got a copy of it, so I can't read it, that's why.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Did everyone get a copy of that?
Yes.
One of the lucky ones, I guess. No discussion? Child?
This item, you know, the city received $1 million for the Rondabaugh Construction. It went $29,525 over budget. The state does not provide that to the city. So the design work, legal fees, and so, to finish the project, the city needs to transfer that money.
Any further discussion? Did the Budget and Finance Committee meet on that?
Yeah, we did meet, and we did move to approve.
Unanimous, was it?
It was unanimous to the people attending.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Anything else?
Move to remove item eight, free cash, $19,661.79 to Green Initiative.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Good.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, Counselor Tanta?
Yeah, Budget and Finance did meet on this issue. This, these funds originally were from the Knott-Solar Energy Project. They were allocated to the purchase of streetlights. And actually, this $19,661.79 was money that was not spent to buy the streetlights, so therefore, suggested we move it back to Green Initiatives. And that's it.
Any further discussion? Counselor Herzog?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got a direct question back to the Chair. Just reading the actual language from the Mayor's Office, it says, "The balance of $19,000 and change will close out to free cash unless a transfer made prior to year end." This is a transfer dated June 24th. Should I interpret years end to be fiscal year or calendar year? In other words, does it make a difference if we approve it tonight?
We'll ask our auditor for clarification.
The Department of Revenue gives us until July 15th to approve any fiscal year transfers. So yes, this would need to be approved tonight.
Or tomorrow. It's not just we had a little wire. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Anything else?
Move to remove item number nine, DPS water retain earnings, $420,000 to fiscal year 2015, budget reserved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Discussion?
Budget and Finance did meet on this, and we did move to send it before us approved. This will be necessary to keep the water and sewage rates down.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Anything else?
Motion to remove DPS sewer retained earnings, $315,000 to fiscal year 2015, budget reserved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Move to approve.
Second.
Counselor Tanta?
This is similar to the last orders. This will allow the sewage rate to be held longer.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Anything else?
Move to remove item number 11, police superior's negotiation tentative agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Budget and Finance did review this. We met with Mr. Bobardi to discuss it. Essentially, sort of the short story is, after negotiations, the city's cost of living is giving a 1.5% fiscal year 15, 2% fiscal year 16, 2% fiscal year 17, and there were concessions that were granted by the superior offices in terms of sick leave and appealing sick leave, and the committee voted to...
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
General Government, I'd like to take out the one and two collectively.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? amend order loan appropriation for the Brezner Hand Project and reservation brought up for next special election. I'd to move to receive and file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Thank you. Green Education.
Nothing, sir.
License and permits. Counselor Hartquist?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to remove item number four, A-frame sign request on In Street for Pandora's Box.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Point of order, I'm going to recuse myself.
This is a pretty straightforward request. License and permits met this evening. We voted two to zero to allow an A-frame for Pandora's Box second location. Their first location is on Pleasant Street. Their second location is behind State Street. It's a basement office. It's in the corner, so we are allowing them permission to put an A-frame to advertise their business.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Anything else?
That's it.
Neighborhood City Services?
Mr. President, I move that we remove item number two from Committee.
Second.
Could you read that for us, please?
An ordinance to amend Section 3-26d, a table of designated off-leash hours.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
The committee met approximately a week ago on this matter and another matter, and we asked Mr. Bracy to explain to us any problems in particular regarding off-leash dogs at the Marches Hill and Mosley Pines locations. This ordinance change would amend the hours, expanding them from dawn to dawn to dusk. And over the two-year period that this ordinance has been in place, it's been a readily quiet, and in his judgment, and in the judgment of the Mosley Park Association, the trustees, I guess they're called, a successful endeavor. To be more specific, there have been 17 citations at those two locations over the time period, those two years of operation. And he said, in almost every instance, he couldn't give me a number. Those were licensing issues, that the dogs were not properly licensed, or they didn't have a collar with a tag on it. And so we voted three to nothing in favor of its passage.
Could you read the table of designated off-leash areas for each park, please? Whoever has it? Good.
Thank you. The Cashman Park is staying the same. There's no change to Cashman Park. The off-leash hours remain, 7:30 to 9 o'clock in the morning, and 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the evening, with specific exclusionary areas which is not changing. Cashman Park has no change. Mosley Woods and Marches Hill, there is no change to the exclusions. The only changes are to, or for the hours, to make it dawn to dusk at both Mosley and Marches.
Any further discussion? Counselor Augman?
I'm just wondering about the seven months. It says, for the seven months following the effective date of this subsection. Forgive me, I haven't got a dog these days, so how does that, what does that mean in context of the ordinance?
I, Mr. President, I believe, I don't know if this is carried over from old language. When the, two previous councils ago approved this, there was, that was put in there to allow a pilot period, and then we, it would sunset at the end of those seven months. So I think that was perhaps what they call a squibberner's error, in the words of...
Yes, thank you to Counselor Cameron. Yes, apparently, we missed this in all of our time.
Do you rise, please?
Yes, apparently, we missed this. Sorry, Mr. President. I would therefore move to amend the language to strike that clause, beginning with A and ending with subsection. So it would read, notwithstanding of the provisions of subsection A, dogs are allowed off-leash at... Apparently, we missed that in all of our meetings.
One second on that. Is that an amendment?
It's better than amendment.
Second amendment.
All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Both? No.
Point of Parliament, read quickly, Mr. President. Do we need a new motion to vote on the amended version, or do we, is this amendment, are we going to vote on the motion that's already before?
We can vote on it as amended. Roll call.
Okay, this is a table of designated off-leash areas. Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Augman?
Yes.
Counselor Hartquist?
Yes.
Counselor Herzog?
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
No.
Anything else?
Yes, Mr. President. I move to remove item number three from Committee.
Second.
Which one's that?
Amendment of ordinance, Section 3-26 subsection E, on the rules of designation off-leash hours.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Mr. President?
I move to approve this item.
Discussion?
Again, Mr. President, we made similar modifications to the original proposal, so enforceability was more likely. This was actually drafted in such a way that any individual observing dogs playing and roughhousing in the park areas would be responsible, that are owners, but other observers would be responsible for reporting to the animal control officer. And we thought it was more appropriate to actually have the animal control officer, who is trained, to make those judgments. And we came out with a three to nothing favorable recommendation to the council.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Anything else?
Mr. President, point of order? Should that require a roll call vote?
For an order?
As an ordinance?
It's an order, isn't it?
It's an ordinance.
It's an ordinance.
Ordinance, okay. Roll call vote.
Rules for designation off-leash area. Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Augman?
Yes.
Counselor Hartquist?
Yes.
Counselor Herzog?
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Planning and Development?
This is a point of order. I guess we should go back and do the roll call on the first one, too, because that's also an ordinance.
We did.
We did. You both in together?
Yes.
No, we did.
No, we did a roll call.
Did a roll call on the first one?
We did.
It was nine to one.
Honest to God, we did.
Okay, yeah, you're right. We were all here. All right, we were here. I took a vacation. That was a paddle boarding.
I didn't want to say it.
With a P S.
You're too busy chasing dogs down Cashman, that's a problem. I use the walk. Planning and Development?
Yes, Mr. President. Motion to remove item number two, amendment ordinance zoning related to Medical Marijuana Treatment Center.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Discussion? No discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have Mr. Port here, who I'm sure could give a much better explanation than I could. I was not able to be at the joint hearing with the Planning Board and the Planning and Development Committee, but I believe this was approved two to zero. The amended version that you have before you in the packet, that's permissible to the President?
I'm going to be worked to nine tomorrow, so I'll tell you. The long and the short is that the city is required to adopt this ordinance to comply with the ballot question that was approved in 2012, and some recent case law, if you will, the Attorney General's Office providing feedback to communities already on their ordinances. I've recommended this ordinance be adopted to fill what is essentially a hole in our zoning right now, to address the new allowance of medical marijuana treatment centers in Massachusetts. What is proposed is a small area of the business park. You can see on the color overlaid zoning map, the area that this particular use would be allowed. What is recommended here is that it be a special permit only, not a by right use, subject to review by the Zoning Board of Appeals, with specific criteria for their review, which is spelled out in the ordinance. In the Planning Board and Planning and Development Subcommittee, it was discussed, there's two subgroups of the medical marijuana treatment facilities. One is the cultivation of marijuana, this medical marijuana. The other one is actually the distribution or the selling of it. And the Subcommittee recommended to allow only the cultivation, not the distribution. So that is the ordinance that's before you right now. They had had some discussion about the alternative, which was to allow both types of uses, but... They had had some discussion about the alternative, which was to allow both types of uses, but in this case, the Subcommittee and Planning Board recommended adoption of only one of them, and that's cultivation.
Counsel Hagerman?
If I may, I'll add a little bit more color to the discussion. So we met in a joint, joint meeting with the Planning Board. The original proposal, so you can see, you can understand what changed, was to include a larger area along Hale Street, and it would actually have included the Cabot Stain site. So the two changes that came out of our discussions, and they were informed by Counselor Junta, whose ward includes much of that area along Hale Street, was first to excise everything along Hale Street and limit the area to this one corner of the business park. The second bit of discussion is we took testimony about the differences between cultivation, which in this case would probably be done with inside a warehouse-style building, and it'd be essentially invisible, and then the dispensaries themselves, which may involve cash transactions, and the testimony was informed by what we've seen in other states where they've had similar statewide initiatives, like California and Colorado, and we were much more concerned, as a joint body, about the impacts of those kinds of transactions and associated things that we didn't necessarily want. So the compromise was to not allow distribution at all and only allow cultivation. There was a concern expressed by the Planning Director that the Attorney General may not accept that distinction, so I think the council needs to be on notice that we do not have a favorable ruling by the Attorney General that you can separate cultivation and dispensaries. But that is the proposal that came out of committee, and it was unanimous two zip. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Tanta?
Can you tell us why the Cabot Stain site was removed? I understand Counselor Junta asked for it. I mean, I looked at it, it's about three or four tenths of a mile from any residences. It seemed fairly secluded there, and that three or four tenths of a mile is about the same distance as from the area that is being designated. So I just, I mean, is there any special reason to exclude Cabot Stain?
Counsel Hagerman?
If I may, two reasons, really. One is the traffic on Hale Street. That's really the only thoroughfare, and we've already had problems, they're notorious, especially with satellite, you know, Garmin devices telling truckers to go through Turkey Hill to get to the business park, and we're trying to undo that with signage and so on. So there's a worry that whatever traffic is associated with Cabot Stain, whether it's medicinal marijuana or what you, what have you, is an impact on, on Counselor Junta's ward. But that actually was not the primary consideration, and I, I welcome comment from Counselor Connell as well. The Cabot Stain site is really a choice development site for the city, and we have very few. That is to say, a tax revenue generating site. And so there was a concern that there would either be a stigma or a chilling on the marketing of that property. Whether that's true or false, that was the concern, and as we, as I say, both the Planning Board and our committee wanted to make sure that that site is freed up for something like a Cabot Stain or a corporate headquarters, and not something like medicinal marijuana. That was the thinking. So those were the two reasons. It wasn't simply an objection by Counselor Junta. I didn't mean to cast it in that light, but I welcome more comment.
I think you characterized it correctly, if I may, Mr. President. There was an additional concern, and, and it was kind of a subtext to our discussion, and that was the issue of medicinal marijuana attracting the potential, hopefully not the likelihood, of criminal activity, of someone trying to break in and steal something because of the nature of their product. And we thought something that is more isolated, being the Cabot Stain site, was more likely to potentially, however remote that, that possibility, attract that kind of attention. And we thought that an area that is more enclosed and surrounded by other businesses, that is lighted, and more accessible to the police, might be less likely to attract that kind of activity, however remote the possibility. That was our third consideration. But I think the primary one was that which Counselor Hagerman suggested, and that was that the Cabot Stain property is an eminently developable property, and hopefully will attract a wider range of proposals for reuse once they leave the site.
Counsel Herzog?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could direct a question to either Counselor Hagerman or the Planning Director. Just looking through this, the definitions, the third paragraph of definitions is explicit that, that a cultivation center not include a medical marijuana treatment center or a registered marijuana dispensary. It says it twice in that third paragraph, that treatment centers and dispensaries are prohibited in all zoning districts. But then when I scroll farther into Section D, under documentation required to support an application, the very first bullet says, "A copy of its registration as a treatment center or dispensary." So I guess I'm confused about that.
Sure, I can clarify that. After the meeting of the Planning and Development Committee and the Planning Board, I made revisions to the ordinance as it was originally drafted. The terminology that you're seeing underneath the definitions of medical marijuana cultivation center, which goes on in the second paragraph to refer to the medical marijuana treatment centers, MMTC, and registered marijuana dispensaries, RMD, those are the terms used by the state as well as some other communities. I revised the language, and if you, if you read this ordinance in its full, including the, the language of this paragraph and the other ones, it actually breaks, this language now breaks it down, so it's actually providing clarity that medical marijuana treatment centers, which the state recognizes as a term, as well as registered marijuana dispensaries, which the state recognizes as a term, includes both the cultivation and the distribution or dispensary. So the paragraph goes on to explain that it's actually removing from that definition or what's allowed, the transfer, transportation, selling, distribution, you know, deliveries, et cetera. So it actually just, this paragraph here, these two paragraphs are intended to separate these two, and so I realize that you're seeing those terms in here, but it's actually removing the dispensary component from what is allowed in Newburyport, as recommended by the Subcommittee.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call? Counsel Tanta?
I guess the question would be to the Planning Director. Did you consult with the brokers for the Cabot Stain property? I mean, is the argument that there would be a stain on the Cabot Stain site if they were included in this zoning?
Sure.
I mean, it's a little ambiguous, where you go out there and get any business you can for the site, except if...
Sure. Yeah, and again, I had recommended this area, and you'll see some other somewhat landlocked parcels in that area, but I had recommended this area because it is so far away from sensitive locations that are identified by other communities, as well as the state, things like schools, churches, parks, et cetera, for that very reason. And, and talking to the brokers for the property, because they are interested in selling that or transferring that property right now, they're in the process of doing that, they had indicated no objection to this. It basically just adds one more allowed use that they would be able to do, of course, subject to a special permit. So they have no objection if that area were to be zoned similarly to the other area on the map. It's just another allowed use. Similarly, with the other properties in the business park, it doesn't change any of the uses they're allowed to do today, it just adds one more that would be allowed if, if it were permitted properly through the ZBA.
And the other objection was traffic flow. It's just, I mean, on one hand, we're saying that we would like a lot of business to locate there, but how do we know that that, another, an alternative business would have more or less traffic, it might be worse? So the reasoning just, maybe, it just doesn't make sense to me, as to why you exclude...
If I may, the reasoning on the traffic is not volume. I think I said, no matter what you put there, we have an existing problem with truckers coming down Hale Street. So that's not going to change necessarily. But I think Counselor Connell alluded to it, the, the character of, not to say, you know, of, we're not sure about these businesses. They're unproven, and, and we don't, we don't know, you know, who's going to be frequenting them, let's put it that way. It's, it is legal in the state of Massachusetts now to have these dispensaries, but realize that we still have a federal ban. So for example, in San Francisco, where I, I used to live, marijuana use, even recreational, is essentially encouraged, yet we still had federal raids, we still had robberies, we still had all kinds of unwanted spillover effects. I, I can't say that we'll have any of those in Massachusetts, it's just we don't know. And so we, we played it very cautiously at committee. That's all I can tell you about the reasoning for myself.
Counsel Vogel?
Thank you, Mr. President. So with that caution that we're essentially eliminating the dispensary portion of it, and if I could direct a question to the, the committees and the Planning Director, where does that put us? Are we just, you say, you know, be, be aware that this may come back at us, or so on and so forth. How much discussion went around that, and what have other communities seen? Thank you.
Well, I provided some feedback to the Planning Board and the Planning and Development Committee, both during and after the meeting, and the case that I would cite actually is Wakefield, Mass. They attempted very early on to prohibit both dispensaries and cultivation, and the Attorney General's Office, I'm happy to distribute the letter that they submitted back to the town, but they basically disapproved that ordinance, ruling it to be in contrast, actually in violation of the ballot question and the state statutes that are applicable, because it would be, the long and the short is, if the goal of the ballot question was to allow statewide, you know, these facilities, you know, in different regions, and every community said, "We're not going to allow them," that would thwart the, the ballot question as it was adopted by the voters. So that was basically the rationale, and, and I would say, based on my own reading of prior case law, I can understand how they came to that conclusion. So I had recommended both to the Planning Board and Planning and Development Committee that we adopt provisions, at least, both for dispensaries and cultivation. My concern being, and again, as my land use background, my concern here is that if we do not clarify what the requirements are for dispensaries and allow it somewhere in the city, that someone could come back and challenge the ordinance on its face and argue that it's allowed anywhere because we have not provided provisions appropriate for it. So again, I would recommend that we cover both, both provisions of that, but again, the recommendation that came out of committee was to allow only cultivation in Newburyport and to explicitly prohibit the dispensaries for some of the anticipated reasons of concern. You know, Counsel Junta had mentioned the cash transactions and so forth, because of course, credit card companies won't get involved with the business, you know, because of the federal-level regulations. So that is a bit of the background for you.
Counsel Connell?
Mr. President? Thank you. And, and I hope this is the last comment we're going to have to make on this, but probably not.
I hope so, too.
There's tremendous uncertainty about this, because we don't know how this is going to play itself out, which, which Counsel Hagerman alluded to. But I don't think the people of Colorado would have expected the explosion of cash transactions around marijuana distribution that, that they've experienced over the past year. I, I will point out that it was the unanimous recommendation of both the Planning Board, in their judgment, and, and the two members of our committee who were sitting at that time, that we take this, it is a somewhat cautious first step, and we're not the only community who is kind of subdividing the, the law. Our sister community of Amesbury is also engaged in that kind of subdivision, that is, they're allowing for the cultivation but not the distribution at a site that I believe has been identified. So we're taking a half step. We hope we are covering our liabilities, we believe we are at this time, and until the Attorney General or a challenger comes forth and, and questions that judgment, we think this is a prudent first step.
Counsel Tanta?
So I understand the caution, I understand the outnumber. And what you're telling me is that the Planning Board and the committee decided that we're going to exclude the Cabot Stain site, but we're going to put this potentially dangerous site where robbers might come, and we're going to put it in the business park, where, and quite frankly, I think, and the Cabot site's a nice site, and you know, and I, I think it's desirable, hasn't had much interest since it's been on the market, but it's desirable. And aren't we threatening the other potential businesses? Aren't we threatening the upgrade of what was an industrial park to a business park? I mean, I, I'm just having trouble figuring out the reasoning of this. I mean, why is it cautious to put this, to zone it in the business park, all right, where it's not being cautious to locate it in an isolated site on Hill Street? I just don't understand.
Counsel Vogel?
And I'll throw out the question, why is it cautious to break it up and potentially open this up to either lawsuits or whatever it might be? Why, why wasn't the whole package addressed in terms of dispensaries and so on and so forth? I think that that's an uncautious move, quite frankly, and it sets us up a little bit. I'll vote no.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Roll call on the amended ordinance zoning Section 12B Medical Marijuana Treatment Center. Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counsel Hagerman?
Yes.
Counsel, Counsel Hartquist?
Yes.
Counsel Herzog?
Yes.
Counsel Kinsey?
Yes.
Counsel Tanta?
No.
Counsel Vogel?
No.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Who knows, it's so passed.
Anything else coming out?
Yes, unfortunately, Mr. President. I'd like to remove item number three, please.
I was hoping there wasn't, but... Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Which, which one?
Mr. President, motion to approve Harbor Master, the amended ordinance related to the Harbor Master facility.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yet again, I was not at this meeting, so I'm not going to really be able to talk about a lot of these, which is great for me. So the Planning and Development Committee did approve this two to zero in the joint hearing with the Planning Board, and essentially, this is just to, you know, ensure that we can move ahead with the Harbor Master facility by right on the central waterfront, and this just clarifies that. It is obviously set back from Water Street, so it's a little different than your average building.
Roll call?
There's a roll call for the amendment, the ordinance zoning Section 12B Harbor Master facility. Counsel Cronin?
Yes.
Counsel Hagerman?
Yes.
Counsel Hartquist?
Yes.
Counsel Herzog?
Yes.
Counsel Kinsey?
Yes.
Counsel Tanta?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion to remove item number four.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a, I'm going to read a specific motion, there is some timeliness to this, and this was language suggested by the Planning Director. Motion waive the rules and adopt the proposed zoning amendment regarding FEMA. Firm map references, City Council Planning and Development Committee, document number four, in one expedited reading this evening due to the July 16th federal deadline for adoption of the new FEMA flood maps by local communities required for continued participation in the National Flood Insurance Program, whereas failure to take such action could result in a public health and safety emergency involving both public and private property.
Your second?
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Herzog?
Thank you. If I could direct a question just to the Chair. What is being changed in this proposal?
I would defer to the Planning Director for fuller explanation.
Sure. It's actually the most boring amendment you have this evening. It's, it's basically just a list of maps. What happened was, in 2012, you may recall, we adopted new maps that were presented to us by FEMA, and again, at that time, we had to adopt it to maintain our participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. The 2014 maps that they issued very shortly after 2012 really didn't change a whole lot in Newburyport. There's a couple of very small, almost, you cannot even discern the changes if you look at the maps. I spent a lot of time looking at them. There's a, there's two or three very, very, very small changes in the middle of wetlands, so they don't really affect anybody. So I just wanted to let you know, there's really no change that we're experiencing from this, only that we have to reference the new maps in our zoning ordinance in order to report back to the federal government that we're in compliance.
Thank you. What he said.
Your second, David.
There was a second.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
This is amendment to order zoning section three Flood Plan Overlay District to waive the rules to approve in the first reading. Council Cronin?
Yes.
Council Augerman?
Yes.
Council Harkwitz?
Yes.
Council Herzog?
Yes.
Council Kinsey?
Yes.
Council Tanta?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Connel?
Yes.
Council O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. President, motion to remove item number five from the packet.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Go ahead. Read it for us, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Now read it. What we're going to vote on, please. Council Cameron, or someone from the committee?
You're going to read it? Yeah.
Theodore Dane, the City Council, City of Newburyport, that the sections 28, 28C, and 28E of Article 28 of the zoning ordinance be amended pursuant to section 12B adoption and amendment as follows. Section 28 Demolition Control Overlay District, change the title of 28 from Demolition Control Overlay District to Demolition Control Overlay District. Establishment, under subsection 28C3 entitled "No Demolition Delay," replace the text reading the provisions of Article X10 or Section 5 of the Newburyport Code. Building demolition shall not apply to any demolition subject to this section with the following text. The provisions-
Point of order. Could someone perhaps, who is more versed in this, explain what's going on? I'm reading through this, I don't understand it.
That's what I asked someone from the planning committee to do, and no one spoke up, so I guess we'll table it. So, I don't know, no one wants to get up.
I beg your pardon, Mr. President. I didn't hear you ask that. Could I suggest that maybe we-
Mumbling, so.
We hear five and six together, because I can probably explain them both very briefly. They go together, we'd save a lot of time, and I could explain them for the council.
Motion to take five and six out together?
Yeah, withdraw that motion and remove item number six also from committee.
There is a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
And then a motion to approve both collectively.
Second.
Now try to explain it, please. Thank you.
Okay, if I may. So, these two ordinances are cleanup. It's what the staff for the city, that is to say, the planning director and Gary Calderwood, the building commissioner, have learned, working with the ZBA and the planning board, from the time that we adopted these ordinances. There are only one page each. To boil them down for you, they each do one thing with advisory reports. The concept behind whether to allow a demolition was to get away from the sort of "he said, she said, it's worth saving" debate, and actually get some reports that the decision-maker can rely upon, from an expert that knows how to fix a building. So, the advisory reports are written to inform the ZBA in the neighborhoods or the planning board downtown. The problem that the chairs of those boards and the planning director found is that there was only seven days for them to hire a person from the time that the application went in. And that's not how they operate. The chair of the ZBA and the chair of the board were not comfortable giving a pre-approved list of consultants, and so they want it to come before them. They'll open the hearing, and then they'll decide whether they want to hire an expert. Because if it's a really small project, say it's downtown, and someone wants to demolish a chimney and not a whole building, they don't want to have to hire anybody, and they can make that decision. So, that is what that is all about. Now, in practice, we've already been caught with our pants down on this. There was an application heard before the ZBA at 22 Collins Street. I'm only talking about it because it was in the newspaper. And the ZBA did not have time to hire their own expert. So, the whole ordinance went awry on us, and that only the applicant had an expert put in testimony. And in fact, the newspaper reported testimony from their appraiser, saying that it was going to cost something like $800,000 to rebuild a three-bedroom house, which is obviously not true, and because they were taking into account other things. This will fix that. And we have, it's timely, because we have another case at 114 Merrimack Street, which is up for continuance next week at the ZBA. And that was originally one of our oldest firehouses, actually. It's the old Mr. India Building. We don't have the report from the city's expert yet, so we need to make this amendment to give the ability to the ZBA to hire an expert, so they know what they're looking at. Okay. The other change as to demolition delay, in downtown, there is no more demolition delay. We did away with that. Instead of a delay, it's an up or down vote based on data and information. In the neighborhoods, there is an ambiguity, and we worked out on a, actually came up on a case in the South End, where there was a change made to a roof line. A roof line has nothing to do with the exterior walls of the building, so it's not captured by our new ordinance. It's not someone putting an addition on the back, but that's a loophole, and that somebody could theoretically put in a two- or a three-story addition on an historic building and totally change it. And that's not what anybody intended. So, this language merely clarifies what we came up with administratively, which is roof line changes in the neighborhoods on an historic building still go through demolition delay. That's the way it was now, that's the way it'd still be. The one change, which was clarified with building commissioner Calderwood, is that dormers will be added to that. Previously, he approved dormers. The problem we had there is, what's a dormer and what's an addition? Nobody knows. You know, you could do a dormer that was almost as wide as the whole building and have one inch clear on either side, and that would be Gary reviewing it. Or you could add those one inches on either side, and it would be demolition delay. So, there was just too many angels fitting on the head of a pin question. We finesse this, and it will go to demolition delay. Not the zoning board. It does not expand the zoning board's power, so you don't have to, if you're a homeowner and you want to put a dormer on your house, you do not need to get a special permit. It just goes through demolition delay the way it used to. The other thing we learned were signs. So, downtown, when we did our, the initial ordinance, we were smart enough to say, "Look, windows and doors, you don't need to go to the planning board to change those. That can be done at a staff level by the planning director." We omitted signs mistakenly, and now we're putting them in. And again, that has come up recently, where there was a modern material proposed to Andy Port that he wanted to approve, and then one that he didn't want to approve, and we're clarifying that he gets to make that decision. That's the whole universe of it in those two pages. And I'll take any questions, of course. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Cronin?
Just on the roof line, if I can address Council Augerman. My concern has always been that somebody's circumstances change. Either it's triplets versus, you know, twins, or, you know, parents are moving back in, or kids coming back from college. So, what happens? Where do these people go?
Right. If I may, that's exactly the question that the building commissioner had. It's the right question. Because the point is to save the historic buildings, not freeze them in time. And the way you save them is by letting people adapt to modern use. So, if they have triplets instead of twins, they should be able to stay in their home. They, if they're proposing to change the roof line, to put in, say, make the attic higher, so that they can put a full bedroom in there, they will now be subject to demolition delay by the historical commission, even if it's just a dormer. And again, the existing rule was, if you raise the roof line, so say the ridge of the roof today, and one of these historic buildings is at 36 feet above grade, and you want to make it 37, today, under the current law, you have to go to the historical commission, and they have the option of imposing a one-year delay if they feel that that's harming the building. That's the current law. The difference is, and so the new ordinances that went in was ambiguous as to, do they still have the power to do that? We read it that they still would, but in addition, we clarified the dormer issue, where if they're not raising the ridge of the building, but they're putting in a window that sticks out, that also is subject to historic commission review, but all they can do is put in a delay, just the same thing as the ridge line. They cannot stop the owner from putting in that dormer. It is not subject to a special permit review by the ZBA. That's still on the exterior walls.
But just, you know, I'm just, again, I'm just concerned, you know, that family has to wait a year when it's something that's going to be accomplished anyway. And my last calculation was, the delay is nine months.
Some is shorter, some is longer.
I can't disagree with that. I've never been a fan of demolition delay, I'll be honest. But I would do away with it and do some other kind of design review, because I think demolition delay is a way of just putting people in a penalty box, and it doesn't really achieve anything, because ultimately, the change is going to be made. So, I agree with you. But the compromise in the neighborhoods is, rather than doing full design review like an LHD, all that, all that the city can stop you from doing is essentially demolishing, you know, 75, 25% or more of the exterior walls. But we never, we didn't touch demolition delay, and we're, but we are adding, admittedly, this ambiguity of dormers. Dormers were formerly reviewed solely by the building commissioner, and now they would be treated like these other roof line changes. That is a change.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
This roll call is for amendment of ordinance zoning section 27E and F Downtown Overlay District, and section 28 Demolition Control Overlay District. Council Cronin?
Yes.
Council Augerman?
Yes.
Council Harkwitz?
Yes.
Council Herzog?
Yes.
Council Kinsey?
Yes.
Council Tanta?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Connel?
Yes.
Council O'Brien?
No.
Nothing further coming out of committee?
Thank God. Public safety?
Yes. Mr. President, the move, ask to remove item number nine. Speed limit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? Did you read what it is, please? You have a copy of it?
I'm fine, I'm fine.
You have a copy of it, Trish?
Yeah, I do. I do. Orderance, Chapter 13, Division 7, speed limits. Section 13, 187, 30 miles per hour. The speed limit shall be 30 miles per hour on the following streets or portions thereof. Low Street from Story Avenue for a distance of 1.29 miles in both directions. Section 13, 188, 35 miles per hour. The speed limit shall be 35 miles per hour on the following streets or portions thereof. Low Street from Route 1, Newburyport Turnpike, for a distance of 1.91 miles in both directions. Submitted, Council Robert J. Cronin.
Just a scribbler, sorry, to make a motion to amend the ordinance, last line, to say for a distance of 1.62 miles, instead of 1.91.
1.6?
1.62.
All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Any further discussion? Mr. Opponent?
Just for everybody's edification, MAST DOT, Department of Transportation, set speed limits. We had an issue on Low Street where we had improper speed limit signs. Speed surveys were conducted. These are the speeds that came back from MAST DOT, and we pretty much have to live with them.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Roll call for the amendment of ordinance section 13, 187, speed limits. Council Cronin?
Yes.
Council Augerman?
Yes.
Council Harkwitz?
Yes.
Council Herzog?
Yes.
Council Kinsey?
Yes.
Council Tanta?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Connel?
Yes.
Council O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion to remove item number 10, handicap parking.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Go ahead.
Motion to approve. Second.
Did you read it, please?
Chapter 13, section 13, 179, handicap parking. No person without a duly authorized handicap vehicle registration or placard, as described in Master and Order Laws, Chapter 90, Section 2, shall park in the following described parking areas as designated by signs and symbols. Add Woodland Street, one space at 4 Woodland Street until July 1st, 2016. Submitted, Council Tanta.
Further discussion?
This was a request of a resident of Woodland Street. They have a severely handicapped individual that has moved into the house, and his request is difficult to move long distance, so they'd like that handicap space attached in front of the house to assist him.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Amendment to ordinance 13, 179, handicap parking. Council Cronin?
Yes.
Council Augerman?
Yes.
Council Harkwitz?
Yes.
Council Herzog?
Yes.
Council Kinsey?
Yes.
Council Tanta?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Connel?
Yes.
Council O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion to remove items 7 and 8, Fair Street Parking collectively.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Go ahead.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Herzog?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could direct a question to either the W2 counselor or the committee chair. At, two weeks ago at our last council meeting, there were a number of questions, concerns, et cetera, from residents of Fair Street and immediate abudders. And I'm just curious whether the proposal as written meets their desires.
Mr. President, we took a lot of testimony on this. I believe it does. The one exception would be the resident who spoke against in principle. However, I've had communication with her today, Ms. Poirier, Gloria Poirier, that so long as the Salvation Army gets special dispensation in front of their building, and we make clear, maybe even on the signs itself, of the hours, that she would not pursue a petition. So, so far as I know, I haven't heard from everyone, I haven't polled everyone, we've done as best we can to reach consensus on this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
So, this is to approve ordinance section 13, 168, parking restricted Fair Street and section 180, section G2 zone, to add Fair Street collectively. Council Cronin?
Yes.
Council Augerman?
Yes.
Council Harkwitz?
Yes.
Council Herzog?
Yes.
Council Kinsey?
Yes.
Council Tanta?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Connel?
Motion to remove item 6, State Street Parking.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Your second? Discussion? Roll call.
This is to approve ordinance section 13, 174, State Street. Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Igraman.
Yes.
Counselor Harkwitz.
Yes.
Counselor Herzog.
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
We're running the meeting, could you be quiet, please, over here? Hello? Hello? Could you be quiet? Thank you.
We're at the end. Motion to remove item 5, road races.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Did you read which ones we're talking about? Did you read the ordinance, please? You have the ordinance, please?
This is an ordinance to regulate event charging entry fees or soliciting donations which utilize city streets and sidewalks. Chapter 12, section 1298, road races, walkathons, and bicycle events. Purpose and intent, the use of city streets and sidewalks for the purpose of road races, walkathons, or bicycle tours are positive events that promote exercise, general good health, and Newburyport as a destination. These events do not, events due from time to time create hardships, impacts on neighborhoods, and traffic. To create a balance between conflicting interests, safeguard participants in these events, residents, visitors, and city of Newburyport, this ordinance will define and codify the procedure to ensure safety and enjoyment for all.
Yeah, that's enough? Thank you. Any discussion? Counselor Herzog?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a question to the, to the committee chair. Under limitations, first line, it's specific to all road racing, walkathon, bicycle, or swimming events. And yet, the definitions above are specific to road race, walkathon, bicycle, and multi-disciplined events. Just wondering whether that first line under limitations, instead of saying swimming, should say multi-disciplined. If you want to do it, that's fine by me. If I may continue, otherwise, should a, otherwise, should a, should a proposal come before the council for a true triathlon, would it be covered under this, under this sentence?
Counselor Cronin?
That's what I was kind of aiming for with road racing, bicycling, and swimming, which is a triathlon. Fair enough, case. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
This is for the ordinance to amend ordinance section 1297, road races. Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Igraman.
Yes.
Counselor Harkwitz.
Yes.
Counselor Herzog.
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
And Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
That is all.
Public utilities?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Rules committee?
Nothing, your report.
Go to the audit. Every year, we've canceled the last meeting in July because it coincides with Yankee Homecoming, because there's always limited parking out there, but that's the wish of the council. Counselor Connell?
I move that we cancel the second meeting in July.
Second.
Discussion? All in call.
This is to cancel, July 28, 2014, meeting. Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Igraman.
Yes.
Counselor Harkwitz.
Yes.
Counselor Herzog.
Okay.
Counselor Kinsey.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Anything else, we'll go to the audit?
Yes, given that we are now not meeting at the end of July, I'd like to wish, offer a happy birthday to Counsel Vogel, as this is his birthday month. Thank you.
That's for the good of the audit?
It's a good thing, it's a good, good month.
Anything else? Take a motion to, okay, Counselor Connell?
Yes, I'd like to compliment the assistant clerk on the job she's done tonight.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent job, excellent job. Take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Aye.
See you tomorrow.